Hi, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Steve and Mr. Bill. All right, good to see everyone. 3:45. Today, we're having some wonderful feedback from our good friends from H.R. Green, Teresa Stedelman, who is leading the effort with our staff. You guys know, we've been talking about this for a long time. 65 is always the flood that everybody talks about, and people say you should do something. Then all these other floods, you should do something. And I applaud again the council for taking this on and moving forward and all the work that's been done up to this point. So today's intent is to have Teresa give feedback from what she's been hearing from stakeholders and public and et cetera. And then she's going to go to the slides. I'll ask the council if you'd be kind enough to just write your questions, hold till she's done, and then we have till 5:00. So Ms. Gleason, please.
Yes, thank you all so much. As you recall, in February of 2020, when you gave staff direction to hire a consultant, you wanted a very large component to be public engagement. And I applaud H.R. Green and Sasaki. They've done an excellent job engaging the public, targeting in on stakeholders that are impacted by flooding to get that meaningful feedback that you all requested. So today, what we're going to hear is those kind of two waves of feedback that they've done to look for council direction, moving forward. This is really just the beginning of that process, as I indicated in the message I sent to you Friday. Based on what we hear today, staff will send you all a follow-up survey to kind of see if we're on the same page. If we're not on the same page, that's okay. We'll get back together and make sure we can get on the same page before H.R. Green proceeds to the next step. So again, our intent here is please hear all this feedback from Teresa. As the mayor said, jot your questions down. We'll try to get to as much of it as we can today. And then we look forward to hearing your thoughts on all this engagement. So Teresa from H.R. Green, thank you.
Okay, thanks. So it's good to be back. I think I was last here in front of you guys in August, and we were just talking about getting started. And so what I want to do today is to do a check-in, really, and tell you what we've been working on and what we've been hearing. And we've also provided you quite a bit of information ahead of the meeting today. And so we want you to take all of that into account here as we move forward. So the agenda for today, as I mentioned, is really to review the study timeline and the engagement activities that we've been doing and just kind of let you know where we are in the study process. Then I'm going to go through that feedback that we've gotten from surveys and from stakeholder engagement meetings that we've been holding over the past seven months or so now. And then we can turn it over into a discussion of any questions or any priorities, things that you want to talk about or ask about before we move forward. So just to remind everyone that this study has many components to it. A big component is this public and stakeholder engagement piece that we've been working on quite a bit. But along with that, we've been working on looking at some alternatives to land use or to mitigation that could be done to make the city more resilient to flooding in the future. We've also been looking into the current flood operations plan and looking for improvements that we can make to that plan to make it more efficient or costless. We've been looking at the transportation question specifically about access across the city during flood events and improvements that could be made there. And then, you know, going forward from now, we're going to be bringing all this together into some more specific recommendations, and with those recommendations, putting together a funding and implementation plan so that there's, you know, a concrete plan of how we can take these recommendations and move forward and actually make change. I'm dividing the process of the overall study here into three chapters. And so the first chapter was really what we focused on, starting in August and through the fall, was really about data collection, collecting a lot of data from the city, doing some analysis on that data, looking at, you know, talking to city staff and getting information, also reaching out to stakeholder groups and getting information. So it was a lot of data collection and just kind of weeding through the data. The second chapter of this is what we're calling testing ideas. And this is what we've been working on over the winter and through the spring here. And part of that was developing some draft vision and goals for the fund mitigation plan and then developing a number of concepts and some different alternatives and putting together some ideas that we could put out to stakeholders, to the public, and to you to get feedback. So a lot of what we've been doing over the winter is putting together these different concepts, developing a bunch of information that we can share, and then now looking to get feedback here in the spring. Going forward from getting feedback here, we'll be refining those concepts into actual recommendations and, like I said, putting that all together into an actual implementation strategy. And all of this is looking towards still finishing up this study and putting together this plan this fall. And so that's our timeline. As I mentioned, as part of that kind of overall timeline, there's been this engagement with the public and with stakeholder groups throughout. And so in the fall, we engaged in a number of stakeholder meetings with all sorts of groups that have, you know, a relationship with the riverfront, who are impacted by flooding, and met with those groups to get basically their experience of flooding. We wanted to find out what was important to them, how they experienced flooding, what challenges they saw, and how they interact with the riverfront. So again, part of this data gathering phase. As part of that, we also implemented an online survey. Now, normally, in a non-COVID pandemic year, we would do more of these in-person and open houses and the like, but last fall, that just really wasn't possible to get a large group of people together. And so we did these meetings through Zoom meetings. We had some in-person, small group meetings. But again, we tried to reach out to many different groups and then also have the online survey to reach more people. We did get 346 responses to the online survey, so it did reach out to quite a few people. In the spring here, we've been able to do a little bit more of the in-person types of engagement. And like I said, we've been working on these concepts. And so really, the purpose of this second wave of engagement was asking the questions about what should the goals and priorities be, and how do you feel about these different strategies and solutions? So we can get some feedback on that to start forming the plan. We again had stakeholder meetings with various groups throughout the city. We also had an open house event, and this was an invitation event, but it invited different community groups that hadn't been involved earlier to participate, trying to hear more voices from more neighborhoods. The media was invited, high school students were invited, so we're trying to really, you know, expand that list of folks who are providing feedback. As part of this second wave of engagement, we also did another online survey and coupled with a paper survey. And so there was opportunities to view information on television, on the video that was on the internet, and people had the option of filling out paper surveys or online surveys. And so through that combined effort, we were able to get 507 responses, so even more than the first time around, and feel like we're, you know, reaching a good segment of the population. And, you know, part of this was, you know, a bit of a media blitz as well with, you know, staff doing interviews and, you know, providing this information to be aired on the local stations. We are planning one more wave of public engagement, and this will happen over the summer. And this will be more of a confirmation of, we heard your feedback here in the spring, these are the recommendations we put together, this is the type of priorities that we've put into the plan, this is how we would phase and implement the plan, and just to get feedback on that before it's finalized. So those are the three waves of engagement that kind of go with that overall process of the study. So I'm going to recap what we had heard in these different waves of engagement for you. In the first wave, again, we are asking questions about what should be the city's priorities, finding out more about how people feel about Davenport, how they feel maybe about their specific neighborhood or where their business is located, and how they feel about the riverfront and how they interact with the riverfront. And so the things that we heard is that access was a big issue that people had about flooding, whether it was impact to their business because roads were closed and people couldn't get there, or just getting across town, or access to city facilities, access came up quite a bit. And then, you know, of course, the impact of flooding that has on businesses, on people in their residences, and on just community infrastructure was something that came up. We asked people, you know, why do you like living in Davenport? You know, what do you love about your neighborhood? Because we want to keep those types of things in mind when we're thinking about changes. You don't want to ruin things that people cherish and enjoy. And then we hear a lot about having local businesses, having outdoor gathering spaces, having long-term relationships. You know, people talked about they had lived in their neighborhood for decades, and they knew people in their neighborhood, and that that was important. So we heard things like that. When we asked about the riverfront, we asked about, well, what are things that would increase your visitation to the riverfront? Why would you go to the riverfront? People said that there needed to be more things to do along the riverfront. They want, you know, better access along the riverfront. People asked for more natural areas to enjoy along the river. And then they brought up the need for some sort of flood protection and maintenance and cleanliness along the riverfront, I think kind of tied to repetitive flooding, that, you know, can we maintain things along the riverfront? Can they get cleaned up quickly after a flood? And so those are the things that we heard in the fall as we were reaching out to groups. As I mentioned, we reached out to many of those same groups here in the spring, and we were asking them about these different concepts, what the priority should be. And these are a few of the takeaways that we got from those stakeholder meetings and the conversations that we were having with groups. We heard a lot that there needs to be improvements to the existing infrastructure, that there are, you know, pieces of infrastructure that the city has, that the city relies on for flood fighting, and those need to be maintained and updated in some respects, and that that's an important investment. We heard a lot about the economic impact of flooding and that that can be significant to different businesses. We heard that equity is important, that everyone should have some share in improvements and resiliency to flooding, that it shouldn't be concentrated in one area or another, but we should consider the entire riverfront. There is some support for building infrastructure that would reduce flood response effort. And so, you know, building permanent infrastructure as opposed to flood response. And so there's definitely some support for that. And finally, a theme that we heard is that people thought we really need to think about, as a city, developing projects in a way that allows for future increased level of mitigation. People saw, you know, over the period of time, that floods are more frequent, floods are larger as of late, and thinking to the future, people are saying, we need to account for, there may be increased flooding in the future, it may be higher, we need to do things in a way that maybe gives us a little agility with how we want to deal with things in the Going now into the survey responses, as I mentioned, we had 507 people respond to the survey. And we, some demographic information for you, just to understand who was responding. So 301 of those people did answer the question about what ZIP code they're from. And so we found out that we had fairly decent coverage across the city, but also responses from folks in other cities in the Quad Cities here. So we did have response from around the area. In terms of demographics for race, age, or kids in the household, 60% of the respondents answered the question, and for the most part, it was fairly reflective of the actual population here in Davenport. We're a little low on the 18- to 24-year-olds responding to the survey compared to population, and also a bit low on Black and Asian residents, somewhat underrepresented in the survey response, but more or less fairly reflective of the actual population. 74% of the respondents were Davenport residents themselves, 35% were employed in Davenport, 14% were business owners, and 3% were employed by the city itself. In this other category, we found that 50% of the other category were residents of the Quad Cities, so in one of the neighboring towns. So a lot of local response, and that's something people often ask if it's an online survey, you know, who's responding to this survey? Who are we hearing from? So one of the questions that we asked in the survey was for folks to prioritize different flood strategies. What's important when considering a flood strategy? And so we put in a number of statements and then asked people to rate those statements from least important to less important to neutral to more important to most important. And so these are shown here, top to bottom, with the most people replying with a more or most important in decreasing order. So things that came to the top that people thought were really important, prioritizing business and commercial buildings, a flood strategy that's permanent and doesn't require much operation during a flood event, requiring less maintenance, and providing protection to the highest flood possible, homes and residences, you know. So you can see that those are kind of the top ones that come out. Lots of people thought all of these were important in some way, though, so I don't want to discount that, that obviously there's a lot of support for a lot of these ideas. As I mentioned, those top five, though, are listed here. And, you know, so there's 60 to 70% of folks were finding that these were more or most important when looking at a flood strategy. Again, prioritizing business, commercial buildings, is permanent, doesn't require much operation, requires less maintenance, protection to the highest elevation possible, and prioritizing homes and residents. As part of the second wave, I mentioned that we had developed a number of concept alternatives. And so one of the things that we are looking at is there's lots of different ways to do flood mitigation. You know, there's zoning regulations, there's buyouts, there's flood fighting on an individual building level, there's natural things that can be done. But one of the things that we wanted feedback on was infrastructure strategies and finding out what sort of infrastructure strategies might be acceptable or that people would be in support of. And so we put together, as part of this second wave of engagement, a number of concepts that looked at different types of infrastructure strategies, whether those be underground improvements that deal with the storm sewer system and the river backing up and flooding inland areas, whether that looked at landforms or burms or changing the elevation of areas to prevent floodwaters from moving inland, looking at road raises specifically for, you know, low areas of highly traveled roads that maybe flood earlier than the surrounding area, and then finally, looking at flood walls. And so we asked in the survey for people to give a simple thumbs up, thumbs down as to whether they liked different strategies in different areas. And what I'm presenting here is a summary that's overall for the entire riverfront and just some of the themes that we saw in the responses to this question. So there was pretty widespread support, 60% for underground strategies. And so, like I said, these are things that are dealing with preventing the river from backing up sewer systems and flooding out and having to close roads or pump and that kind of thing. People saw these as cost-effective, they saw it as kind of a first step, kind of that low-hanging fruit that maybe sets the groundwork for future improvements, that these were projects that were quicker to implement, and that it would improve access. Reasons that folks didn't like these types of things were, they thought it was too low of a bar, that it was too low of an elevation to be designing to, that they didn't provide any other public benefits, or that it might require too much maintenance. There was also pretty large support, 50% for landforms or burms or road raises, kind of these lift the ground up in some way. People saw them as permanent, reliable, they saw them as more visually attractive than a wall. One of the biggest things that we heard of is that this sort of strategy would have opportunities for pedestrian or other uses, that it could be in a park, there could be a trail on it, something like that, and that it would add to sort of the natural character without standing out, it would blend in. You know, the idea of being permanent and lower maintenance were also important. Some of the negative things that people saw about that, though, and this would come up with any sort of vertical change above ground, is an impact on river views. You know, people have a negative opinion of anything they feel is maybe going to impact the view out to the river. You know, some people brought up that, no, we should just learn to live with flooding instead of building something. And so that was one reason people would not approve of certain structural, you know, infrastructure, things to be built. And then, you know, the concern, too, about upstream and downstream neighbors, if we build something, if we build something out near the river that's a barrier to flooding, what's the impact to those around us? And so a reason that folks would not be for building something like a landform or a road raise. Also, you know, the impact to the adjacent properties and businesses, you know, if you're building something up, what happens to the folks next door? In terms of flood walls, this received the lowest amount of support at 40%. Again, people see flood walls as permanent, reliable, long-term, you know, not requiring a lot of operation during a flood event. But again, there's that negative connotation of impacts to the river view. People's tended to prefer more the landform changes versus a wall. And, you know, some side is, are we just trying to protect car access, or is there better ways to do this than a wall? So it was important for us to not only, you know, see if people were in favor or not in favor of these different strategies, but to understand why, because I think that's important, and feedback for you all to hear, is what people are thinking and why. Some other key takeaways that we took from the survey and from the discussion here with stakeholders is that there does seem to be strong support for trading some permanent solutions instead of operational responses to flooding, that people feel that they, you know, do want to build some things that are going to make that flood response simpler or reduce that operational effort required each time that it floods. There is certainly a desire for solutions that are lower maintenance. I think people understand that things that have to be maintained over time is an ongoing cost and drain, and so that was a theme that we heard. Definitely heard a preference if that structural solutions were built, that they be done in a landform or berm over a wall. And really, that was, you know, tied to the opportunity for co-benefits, other uses in landforms versus walls. There's a desire that the city invests in the long-term solution, and really, you know, we heard about people are anticipating more frequent flooding in the future, and they want the city to consider that and be thinking long-term. And that there's really a feeling that some sort of reliable protection, especially to transportation access, can really be important economically, that businesses would feel that there was a reliable way to get there, they wouldn't have to worry about shutting down during a flood, and that that would invite more investment in the future. So as I mentioned, today is sort of a check-in in that we're trying to let you know what we've been doing and the things that we've been hearing from the public in general. It's meant to give you feedback as part of the overall information that we've been providing so that you can take that into account when you're thinking about some questions, you know, are these the correct guiding principles going forward? You know, should we be considering resilience operations, equity, and public access? And how we take the study from here, from sort of these ideas and the feedback that we got now, and actually turn this now into recommendations to build the plan?
So with that, I think, Mayor, if you want to call on people as they push their buttons, feel free to ask questions, or if you have a specific reaction that you would like to share, that'd be welcome as well.
Roger that. So I'll just buzz in, whatever questions or comments or things you got. Ms. Nicole or Ms. Teresa will have at it. So I see all the women lead.
Thank you. I actually have four questions. The first one is, I'm assuming this is going to be a programmatic plan that will provide us with options and benefits and disadvantages and various costs and effectiveness, right? That will ultimately be used as a foundation for us to be able to make decisions over time, right? You're not going to come up with, here's the answer. Is that correct?
No, it's going to be much more a long-term vision, I think. You know, it's not something that's going to be happen over, it's going to happen over time, not overnight, yeah.
But you're going to give us options and their benefits and disadvantages and not saying, here's the answer that we think Davenport should follow. Is that correct?
We'll make recommendations, but as we've been preparing the concepts, we've been doing that already. Like, there's several different options about looking maybe at a particular area, yes.
Good. That's what I'm hoping, because councils will change, you know, and concepts will change and perceptions, I'm sure, over time, too.
Yeah, and that's a lot of what we've been providing to the public as well, is that this type of solution might have this cost, there's some pros and cons about it as part of what we've been placing out there.
Excellent, okay. I'm happy to hear that. Another one is, in that plan, will you be talking at all about the non-structural options?
Yes, we will.
Okay. And that will include things like, it came up with the public learning to live with the river or making room for the river in certain areas, taking into consideration the first elevation study and those types of things? So all that will be incorporated just right?
For example, the Silverjacket study that's going on right now, we're going to incorporate that information into the plan.
Okay. So right now, the video focused on structural.
Right. And we were asking, as I mentioned, not about all the mitigation options, but about specifically getting feedback on that.
Okay, but that will be in the plan?
Yeah. And I guess to add on to that, a lot of the focus of the H.R. Green study is, I guess, the city-led initiatives. Some of the things in the Silverjackets project would be more individual citizen and business-led projects. So we're trying to make sure we kind of keep that distinction of the city responsibility versus the private property responsibility.
Sure, but they do need to be considered as a comprehensive package, recognizing that there's certain things we have no business in.
Exactly.
Other than support and information and education.
Yep.
I have a lot of interest in the Crescent Bridge on down, that part, you know, rather than the downtown. There's lots of people taking care of those other areas. And I didn't see much about anything other than the structural as it relates to the Causeway to Credit Island. Was there any particular information or interest that came up in some of the public discussions?
So some of the discussions we've had about the Causeway are really about ecological uplift by restoring flow to the Causeway.
With a culvert-type approach?
Yeah, with getting more flow into the Causeway one way or another, yes.
Okay.
And, you know, the impacts also to the mouth of Black Hawk Creek, you know, in there.
Okay, so that'll all be?
Yep, so that's been in discussion, is, you know, are there improvements that can be made to the slough, essentially?
Okay. And my last major question is, in 2002, H.R. Green did a Phase 1 study of the two dumps, the Howell Street and the Marquette Street dumps, along the riverfront. And that was also an area where the outflow from the old water treatment plant went down through a ditch into the three sewage lagoons and then down to the river. And in your Phase 1, H.R. Green recommended a Phase 2 study be done down there.
Okay.
I don't know if H.R. Green has considered, you know, the study that you did in 2002, but there's some very interesting information. I'm particularly concerned about the sewage, the old sewage lagoons with a lot of lead and PCBs and benzoypyrene found in the sludgees that are probably still there, even though we've had floods come in and out. Will H. will you be recommending a Phase 2 for those dump sites? Because that would drive what could actually be done or shouldn't be done along that entire section of riverfront, which is actually pretty extensive.
Yep. We haven't gotten that granular into the specific things, but one of the things that we've noted is that a lot of these areas have a history of mixed fills and industrial uses, and so that the environmental and underground could be a significant cost and certainly something that needs to be considered during design.
Okay, so that will be in. And I would like to recommend that a Phase 2 study be done down there, like you recommended in 2002. We really need to know what's there, because some of it's 20, 30, 40 feet deep.
Yeah, and there's several locations where there's some questions that need to be answered about, you know, what's underground.
Okay.
Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lee, Alderman Green.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. So my first question is, it relates to the underground work. So when we hired you on, one of the things that the council asked is that if at any point there was underground work that we could do to keep Fourth Street open and to keep access to our downtown during major flooding, that that would be brought to us. that that would be brought to us if there was an opportunity for us to address that immediately. And it seems like with any recommendation that you have, that doing the underground work is going to be somewhat of a prerequisite. So my question is, is there some of that underground work that is going to keep access open that we can get to sooner than later? As in, not wait till the end of the year to get your recommendation?
I think there could be. And I've been sharing those pieces of information with city staff where we've identified projects like that that are fairly straightforward and might keep some areas open. So we've been sharing that information, you know, as we identify those.
I still see that as a priority. And now I'm talking to our staff. And I'm sure that some other folks on City Council would agree with me. So you don't have to answer now, but I'd like to know what we're doing with that information and if we can attack some of that stuff. Second question is, will your recommendations that you bring to us vary both by method and by height for the different stretches?
So we've prepared concepts at various heights and methods for all the areas at this time. We will be looking for direction from council, though, on kind of a target, you know, that maybe we want to aim for, whether that's in the short term or in the long term. Because we could pick anything, right? And so we'll need some direction from council in terms of what sort of target, what sort of investment that you want to make so we can, you know, sort of narrow the field of possibilities here.
Okay. When will you be asking for their recommendation?
In the next few weeks.
Yeah. So we'll, as I mentioned, we'll follow up with that survey and that'll have some very specific questions. But if you do have thoughts that you'd like to express now, you're welcome to express those as well. But we're going to kind of try to look individually to see, is there some sort of agreement upon council on more this kind of short-term intermediary or the long-term? That way, we can give them some targeted direction to have something for council to adopt as far as the plan goes by November.
Okay. And then, one of the things that surprised me a little bit was the preference for berming or landforming as opposed to walls, because I think they're very similar in their drawbacks and that there's kind of a disconnect, create a disconnect to the riverfront. But in terms of costing, what is, what's the difference between berming and building walls? Which one's more expensive?
So walls are generally the most expensive. And one thing that I would point out, too, is that it's, when you build a wall, it's harder to make that wall taller in the future. And so one advantage, you know, perhaps of doing more of the landform would be it allows flexibility. You know, you could always add something on top of it, you know, in the future.
Would it be fair to say that we probably have stretches where maybe a wall makes more sense than landforming?
Definitely. And there's definitely horizontal constraints, right? There might just not be enough room. If you want something a certain height, you know, a wall is a very small footprint in comparison.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Let's see. Alderman Dunne.
Thank you, Mayor. First question here, just purely out of curiosity. If 16% of the people were in that other category and 50% of those said they didn't live in the Quad Cities area, who are that remaining 50% that would be filling out our survey that didn't meet any of those other?
I'm not certain. I'd have to dig into the raw data.
Yeah. Just found that one kind of interesting.
Well, we just closed the survey on Thursday, so there's a lot of raw data yet to dig through.
So then, my other question is, between like Survey 1 and Survey 2, or I know there was kind of the differences in there, but we noticed a lot with Survey 1 that a lot of people still wanted and strongly favored using this study as maybe like an asset or economic driver improver for our city, where they want new opportunities to use the river and they still want to be able to use the river. They want maybe more natural parks or areas, all of those things. And then, in the second, kind of all the questions and everything that you showed were, they seemed maybe more technical or not in that space. First part of the question is, are you guys considering, not only like say if we build a berm, but we build a berm that's an amphitheater? Or, you know, that building, are you considering those economic impacts and stuff in your plan as well?
So one of the things that we did show in some of these concepts is how they would work with other master plans along the river, that, you know, we could work something into a park plan or something like that. Yeah. And how it works into a space that's usable to the public and not trying to cut off space, but to just change that space so it's usable for the public, but also provides a flood resilience benefit.
So then, when we get our kind of different options for the different areas, if, you know, one is build a wall and one's build a berm, but with the berm, you could maybe get an amphitheater where with the wall, you just get a wall? Or is that, are those type of things going to be factored in there of the possibilities you can do with the solutions? Or is it purely just, here's your solution, here's the cost?
So I think, you know, for example, either a berm or a wall, there's ways to work those into different land uses. So it's all kind of about, you know, what is the overall plan? What makes sense? It depends on the specifics.
And then the last part of that kind of phasing question is, is that ever going to go back to the public of, are you okay if this area is now cut off from public use? Or, you know, whatever it may be? Or are you okay with kind of factoring in that keyer aspect of the study that we're trying to get out of people's use and the way they use the road and the space and the?
Yep. So as we go back in the summer here, as we're kind of refining some of these ideas, you know, with some direction from all of you about, you know, what are we targeting and stuff? We'll show how those could look and get feedback from the public again. If we decide to do something in this stretch to a certain elevation goal or something, well, this is a concept of how that could look. And we'll, you know, get feedback. Are we hearing you in terms of, yes, this is how we want to use that space or not? You know, that'll be part of that.
Yeah. Okay. And then my other question is, when we talk about we're going to be given some options, or you guys want some feedback on what we're looking at in terms of like long-term or how much we want to spend, things like that, long-term versus short-term? Are you going to, with that, provide our different funding mechanisms and the funding impacts that would come with those different options? Or is it purely just kind of a, how long do you want to take with this project type of thing? Because to me, that's where it gets kind of tricky if, you know, we're talking about a long-term, high, or very expensive item, but we have to fund it all with municipal bonds and we just kill all of our other projects around town. Well, I probably wouldn't vote for that. But if you then say, well, it might take a while, but we can get this awesome federal grant after working on it for five years and then we could have it, that's why it's going to take so long and the city's not liable, you know, those are the same method of getting it somewhere, but kind of two very drastically different impacts. And so are you guys going to touch on maybe some of the funding aspects or how we would fund it to go along with those items?
Yep. So one of the elements that we're already working on is we've identified a number of potential funding sources. And there's lots of different funding sources for different types of projects. So some of it is marrying up potential funding sources with the types of projects they would fund, also with the likelihood of, you know, this particular project being funded by that type of source. And so that's one of the pieces that we're putting together is what would be a funding strategy to try and maximize outside funding sources for various elements, you know, of the project. We're not going to have all those answers and no funding sources are guaranteed, you know. But we're identifying what are some of the possibles and what are the most likely avenues the city could take to try and get some outside funding.
Yeah. And I think that would be helpful, just in making that decision, knowing that kind of, there could be different outcomes depending on what the likelihood of those look like. And I think that funding really would maybe change my mindset of what option I would pick and how, so.
So we're identifying possibilities, but yeah, certainly no guarantees.
Definitely.
All right.
I think that is all I have.
Thank you, Alderman Dunne. Alderman McGinnis. Alderwoman McGinnis, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a few questions as well. And thank you for the study and everything you've done so far. I, one of the questions I had, and I direct this to staff, is was there enough in the plan that, and one of the things that we talked about, it didn't come as a top priority necessarily in the surveys, but protecting city assets, you know, the pollution control plant. Was there sufficient protection in the plan? From staff's standpoint, were you comfortable at the level of protection within the plan that was proposed? And I'm not being critical of it, I'm just asking.
I'll say those are kind of treated a little bit differently. So the water pollution control plant was excluded from this because we had previously heard from the council, that's the first priority we needed to get involved with immediately following the 2019 flood. So that's why that was held separately, because that study's already been completed and we're in the later stages of potential really large EDA grant to help fund the implementation of that. Along the riverfront itself is whether or not those city assets meet it. I will say like Modern Woman Park, you are all aware of our flood protection mechanisms there. Union Station, we're in the last few stages of a potential FEMA grant for that facility. So it's all kind of different as you go throughout the different parts of the riverfront. Obviously, Credit Island, the Lodge, the mechanisms that we put in place years ago worked just as it intended to. So it was kind of as different facilities had different funding plans. So it wasn't necessarily looked at this. We have looked at access to those facilities and that's something that we ask for feedback on from the public.
Okay. Thank you. And a question, because like Alderman Gripp, the short-term dealing with sewer system seems like something that's, we need to be doing yesterday. And we've seen the impact and it seems practical and something that will have to happen at any level of work we do. And so also to staff, is it conceivable? Of course, I know we don't know yet what the infrastructure dollars, what all that COVID package will be, but would we be able to tackle, do you think, any of that within the three-years window that we would have from planning to execution? Do you think any of the pieces of this, the sort of low-hanging fruit of this that we all know is important? Is that, do you think any of that's possible through what we're looking at?
So I know, Cora, it's mine me taking this, abiding at this one. I know yesterday, we received some of the guidelines from the federal government. We're working our way through that. And I believe Tiffany has already sent out an invite for the city council to then have that, those conversations of what that is. So we are working through those questions right now to see what is and is not eligible with the guidance that we got yesterday.
Great. Okay. Let's see. I did have, I do understand in that, you know, the interest in berms, whether than, or the debate between berms or walls or using them in combination, depending whether you have a narrow or large. And we have areas that are very wide. The area we picked up a few weekends ago, like, would that be terrible if it were elevated a little bit? Probably not, you know. The area, you know, to the, on the west end. But, you know, at Main Street Landing, that's a very narrow area. And so it might be a different thing. So that is logical to me. I guess one of the things in going through the plan, the video, I got a little bit confused and I'm trying to, I tried to sort of channel like what people are thinking when they see this. But if we raise a road, do we also need to have a berm, you know? And I know that those options could change throughout the city as well. But so it was sort of the difficult part for me, and I'm sure for you as well, is figuring out, you know, if you can plug, is there a way to plug in these modules? Maybe it's what you were saying, so that we know, okay, B here and C here and D here adds up to this amount of money. You know, can we get that down? Can we start really looking at the cost? Can we get down that close to almost plugging in per square foot what that might cost for a different option in a different place? Which might be an interesting, and I don't know if that's even possible.
So the engineering team has done basically what you just described there. It's about a 30-page document of information, which was a little much to put out, you know, for public comment.
Yeah. And I couldn't, I kept flipping back in the video to go, now this is, this is this much and this is this much. But, you know, if it's a way to, that may be helpful in this process. And I guess the other thing that I saw, there really is no 27-foot solution here.
Not without something very tall and vertical.
Exactly. Exactly. So I want to make, you know, I think that's important that we all understand, there is no 27-foot solution unless we, the only 27-foot solution, sounds like to me, is we move the whole city back a few blocks. Is that about right?
You can move away from the river or you could build something tall that people don't want, you know, something vertical.
Exactly. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Right. Okay. Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Dunne.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to say thank you. You know, I've been involved in a lot of your stakeholder meetings and I know, I know you've heard a lot of my concerns about the west side of Davenport, so I'm not going to rehash them. But I do want to make sure that if we're going to protect the East Village, the downtown businesses and everybody else, we're going to protect the west side as well. It's got to be equal across the board. That's my only concern. And there's a lot of work down the west end that needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Alderman Condon.
Miss, I wanted to thank you for your process and for everything that you did with the outreach. The YouTube video was particularly appreciated by me. I do have a couple of comments. I want to second what Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman McGinnis said. The floodwaters that we had reached further, you know, the impact reached further north than just the waters themselves. And that connection at Third and Fourth Street is really vital for all of the small entrepreneurs that make our downtown vibrant. So sometimes we, you know, it's our tendency to sit back and try to orchestrate the perfect implementation. But if there's some low-hanging fruit there, that could make a really great impact to make sure that we don't lose a footing on the revitalization that we've seen downtown. I was also surprised that there was some favoritism for landforms versus walls. We did do a great job with what we had when the railroads raised the tracks, but I think the impact is still undeniable when you go down there. There is a perception that we lost some ground as you cede some of that land to the hillside. So I guess the process is moving quickly enough. I can say that I favor walls. And I guess a question for you, ma'am, would be, are panels synonymous with walls these days? I hope people aren't picturing a continuous concrete wall that is not convertible.
So there's different ways to do walls. There are permanent walls that are concrete walls. There's also, you know, like what you have around the ballpark, which, you know, more of a demountable wall system. Again, there's a trade-off of something that's permanent versus something that requires a flood response, right? That somebody has to go put up.
Okay.
Both of those, it could be types of walls? Yes.
Well, then again, I guess it's not too early to say. I do unapologetically want to say that it needs to be really great. In Davenport here, we've been holding our effort to take our best shot at putting a world-class riverfront together. We've been waiting to get a casino moved. We've been waiting to revitalize the downtown. And I think our time has arrived. And this is a big lift with a lot of practical things that need to be considered before we get to do what is sometimes perceived as the niceties of making it really nice, really awesome. But I guess it's not too early to say it. It really needs to continue to make Iowa, Davenport, Iowa, Iowa's front porch and open all of our great progress downtown to our Mississippi Riverfront. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, I think Davenport's have done a pretty incredible job. It has been a leader in flood management on the Mississippi. You know, trying to win the battle against the Mississippi, you're not going to have a whole lot of luck, but managing it, I think we've done an incredible job. The adapting from what we've had, you know, as a teenager, I was let out of school, high school, to go fight the flood in '65. So I've been involved probably more than most. But from '65 to today, it's a phenomenal effort the city has made. And, you know, the percent of our 100,000 people and all the businesses that are And, you know, the percent of our 100,000 people and all the businesses that are impacted when the river floods is really a small percentage. So, you know, we love our riverfront. We're going to keep it a world-class riverfront. But, you know, when we talk about $50, $100, $200 million of effort to fight the Mississippi, you know, I don't think that's a feasible idea. But managing it the way we have, you know, we had a dike break. Actually, it wasn't a whole dike, it was a section of a dike. And we've adapted since then and I don't see that ever happening again unless, like Alderwoman McGinnis says, we had 27 feet. Then hopefully the people that are downtown with their businesses next to the dike are smart enough to adapt and get out. So, you know, all money from the government is tax money, whether it's the state or the federals. Let's be fiscally responsible as we look into what we're going to do on our riverfront. Just the staff's already working on the water treatment plant. We've done tremendous amount of infrastructure work already along the riverfront. So we're very fortunate. We got a great administration staff that, you know, for the last 20 years has adopted and done great things. So we're not on the Cedar River, we're on the Mississippi River.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Before I go to a second round here, just ask everybody to please, this was intended as feedback from stakeholders and public to give you guys thoughts. As Ms. Gleason said, please, if you have in-depth questions or more questions, there is an intent to come back to council shortly with more specific and so get more specific guidance. Today's was not to get the guidance, today was to receive the feedback. So Alderwoman McGinnis.
Yeah, I just had one to Alderman Condon's point. You know, we have this, we've been terraforming in Davenport since the city was founded. So, you know, that's something that's taken me a little while, you know, when I, there was a discussion a few years ago about putting a berm where at Main Street Landing and it was like, oh, a berm! Well, we've been doing berms and retrieving from the river really since our riverfront doesn't look anything now like it did. It was much shallower. So I think let's keep that in mind as well. It's, you know, we have been able to, you know, take from the Mississippi when it was in the condition that we could retrieve land and we may have to either give some back or treat it differently. But that's kind of part of our history as well. And I think taking that long view might be a good thing for us all to remember.
Cool, thank you, Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much. One, I want to thank Alderman Ambrose for his point about adapting. And I think we've been adapting for decades and there's much to be said for that as well. So this is a question for staff, I think, I think. You said you're going to come back in a couple of weeks to get some more direction from council on if we have any preferences for approaches or direction to provide to H.R. Green. What kind of information will be provided to us before we're asked for that kind of, providing that kind of guidance? And will we have at least two weeks to review it? Because this is going to be complicated, it'll take some thought, maybe even discussion among ourselves, council.
Yeah, so we would like to kind of keep the timeline somewhat short in knowing that that end goal has always been, you know, the last cycle of November, the first cycle in December. So that the current council could make the decision, seeing how the current council was the one who hired H.R. Green for this study. So I think what we, we really need to be able to, H.R. Green can't fully vet every single one of the ideas you guys saw in the video. I mean, it would be a triple size of the study than we actually had them do. So we really need to be able to eliminate some of those options that council either doesn't feel is feasible in a short amount of time or kind of the timeline you're hoping, you know. So as we've mentioned several times, from the time Cedar Rapids had their large flood till when they were actually implementing projects was, you know, up to a decade, 15 years. So, you know, we want to be able to look at this as scalable, things that the council feels can be funded and we should be seeking grant funding for. So I think really more of the direction we need is what to eliminate now so that they can focus their efforts on the things that we do feel are more achievable. And Teresa, feel free to expand upon that.
Yeah, some direction of just, you know, how you see investment going forward in terms of flood mitigation.
But I would like to have something in my hands. You know, I've got the video and I took extensive notes on it. You've got this general information, but I would like something in my hand. Maybe that 30-page engineering document you've got? Well, we can, you know, like Alderwoman McGinnis said, we can start comparing options and costs and looking at benefits and disadvantages on something other than that video. Because that was very difficult to just try to absorb all that information and make comparisons. So at a minimum, probably that 30-page engineering document and probably some more background information of the options, the costs, the benefits and disadvantages. And give us at least a week to look at it, to try to digest it and make informed decisions.
Okay, so that's up to you to do that, if you're going to provide it. But please remember, we hired them to do the work. Then the staff does that. You guys give particular information. You're not going to take it and take apart the study.
No, that's not what I'm intending, Mayor.
I'm not, Ms. Lee I'm talking about. So I would ask you guys to stay focused, please, and let them do the job. They're asking for some feedback on what you think shouldn't be in there. Ms. Gleason, you should provide, I would expect, some information for them to focus on. But reviewing every document and all the details of a 30-page study, I don't know that that's fair to ask H.R. Green to do that.
We can.
Alderman Doorman.
Yeah, I was just going to ask to that point, maybe also a Cliff Notes version of that 30-page engineering doc because I'm not an engineer, nor do I know if I could read 30 pages of technical engineering talk. But two follow-up questions I have. First off, when we say provide feedback, is that going to be feedback per our seven areas we have identified? Or feedback in general? Because I think that's another point where each of those seven areas, I think, are very different and very unique. And I might have a different thought or opinion on each of the kind of seven zones, or maybe it's five. But those different zones, we talked about at the beginning of this study.
Honestly, both types of feedback will be useful, you know, an overview, big picture. But also if there's specific feedback about specific areas, that's helpful.
And then the other one, I know we said that part of this study was providing updates on our current plan as is. It's like, say we got, have you already provided that back? If, you know, we got a really rainy June and the river creeped up, was that something that we would be able to adapt now or is?
I can take that one. So after the 2019 flood, we did get feedback from the Corps. So we are working from that updated plan now. We haven't gotten the operations team back together yet. But if our incremental improvements that H.R. Green's recommended on that staff level that we can implement, you know, that are fairly cost-neutral, we certainly would do that. But we are already operating off that revised plan from 2019.
Okay. Those are my two follow-ups.
Cool. Anybody else less comments or staff? Me either, Teresa or Nicole? Miss, okay, that's will be your third. Ms. McGinnis, one question or one comment? That's it then.
Yeah, and I forgot this one. So in doing this, I noticed toward the east end particularly, they were, we can do the 24 feet, but Bettendorf only, it doesn't do that far. So it really wouldn't give us all of River Drive. So my question is, are we in this discussion, talking with Bettendorf, finding out if there's anything our neighbors might do? Because I did notice that several times, that yes, we could do it, but it wouldn't mean access from 74, for instance.
Correct, yeah, we did invite Bettendorf to the public outreach session and we are keeping them apprised of what we are doing. But that is a critical concern. So if you all do give us direction on road raises or things like that, we would definitely reach back out and keep them in the loop. But we have been considering that through the process.
Thank you. Cool, anyone else? All right, so Ms. Gleason, I'd ask you to provide the council some guidance on what you would like from them. Or Teresa, if you would provide to Ms. Gleason so she can provide to the council some guidance on what you would like from them, either comments on particular issues or big pictures or even in depth, what you would like from them to give you. So that maybe in your decision, two or three weeks, we get together and discuss that.
Sure, so what we'll do is we'll discuss kind of the council's request on some more data, like what we think is going to be helpful for the council as far as that data request goes. We're going to come out with a very specific Google form with questions that she's kind of alluded to today. But we didn't really want to ask you those questions today because you're seeing this all for the first time and I'm a big fan of sleep on it. Like, you know, let your mind kind of work through and process what you've just seen. So we'll give you some time to fill out that Google form and survey. And then once we've compiled it as staff, if we're seeing really good common themes trending, then staff can come back to you and say, hey, can you validate this is the right direction? And if we don't feel any common themes and there's not a consistent direction, as the mayor said, we will get back together with those very focused questions that we maybe aren't in agreement on so that we can make sure we're giving H.R. Green the most consistent direction to work from as we bring the final recommendation forward in late fall.
And if anybody has any particulars, there's Ms. Gleason right there, so. Okay, one more, one question and one comment, that's it then.
Will we have a chance? I mean, a Google kind of guides you towards specific answers and this is a very complex question you're asking us to address.
I think we would have some areas that are more like, are you in agreement here or here? Or, and then, you know, if you have a specific idea for this area, please share it like in a free form. So you'd have some opportunity to type in as well.
And is there any other opportunity? I mean, I may have an opinion that's different from somebody else and that's fine and that's important. But is there going to be a chance like in a management update for us to discuss it as a council?
Right, and that's kind of where, if, I think if we're all on the same page, that would be the perfect forum. If we're not all on the same page, we would likely need a longer two-hour kind of sit around the table, maybe on a Saturday morning or something, to make sure we have the right time to do it if we're not all on the same page.
You just need to be very happy.
Either way, we'll circle back in person.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Right, good point. The intent is to get back and discuss with these guys what your thought, what the feedback is from. Because you had, now we have the feedback from people, now we want your feedback. So we can take that and they can take that and then give it, the information back to you guys on what your feedback is to focus. But if there's no consensus, that's hard. We'll discuss a work session if we need that. Anyone else? Any staff? Ms. Gleason, Ms. Teresa, any follow-ups at the end?
I'm good.
We appreciate your time.
I'll just say on behalf of the city, thank you for your continued work. Again, nobody else has done this, nobody else has ever taken this on. This council, I applaud you again for doing it. I applaud the staff and the city that is participating in H.R. Green who's leading it. This is going to be probably a historic document, a historic plan to focus the river in Davenport moving forward. Because we've had plans, but we haven't had anything like this. And so I thank everyone for participating and this is one piece. And we're continuing to move forward and lead the way in how to manage this river. Thank you very much.